Before we officially get started with our meeting, we want to ask you to bear with us as we have a moment of silence in honor of the gentleman who is responsible for helping to bring us together here today, who passed away. And he is none other than the legendary E. Stephen Collins. He called today, in typical E. fashion, and said, "Are you available?" First it was the text. And I said, "When?" And he said, "Now." And the next thing I know, we were on a conference call, talking about the importance of literacy. And today, our friend is no longer here. And this is also the anniversary of 9/11. And the spirit and strength of our country, and we as a people, is very much alive and well. But we can never forget what our nation lost. So can we all just stand and have a moment's silence? Thank you. I want to start by asking members who are here to please introduce themselves. And I'm really excited. Always when our Philadelphia colleagues show up. But I share to my colleagues, particularly those that have come from far, far away from here. Well, I'm always grateful when you take the time to come to Philadelphia, particularly when we're dealing with an important issue like this. So let's start.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Pat Harkins. I represent the 1st District up in Erie.
I represent Representative Chris Senaut. I represent the 9th District, which is in Lawrence County, which is on the Ohio border.
Joe Petracca, Westmoreland and Armstrong Counties. I just came to see Cheryl.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Longietti. I represent the 7th District in Mercer County. And when I'm on this end of the state, I always have to explain, it's not Mercer County, New Jersey. It's Mercer County, Pennsylvania, which is also on the Ohio border.
Jim Robuck, 188th Legislative District, Philadelphia, and Minority or Democratic Chair of House Education.
Good afternoon. Michelle Brownlee, 195th Legislative District. Once removed, for my friend Brian Simms.
My name is Brian Simms. And welcome, everyone, to the 182nd District.
Good afternoon. My name is Representative Stephen Kinsey, from the Philadelphia County, primarily Germantown, Mount Erie, East Germantown, and West Oakland.
I want to just start by thanking James Murtiotti, the President here at Pierce. You know, it is not easy. We want to have these meetings throughout the city of Philadelphia. And whenever we talk during Pierce, you have always been a good friend to the Pennsylvania House of Representatives. And we wanted you to please welcome us and just say a few words.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Representative. Guess I'd better sit down and do this. I want to welcome everyone warmly to Pierce. Those of you who have been here before, welcome back. Those of you who are here for the first time, welcome, 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 and hope you come back again. This is very important work. We certainly are invested in this work. For those of you who may be not completely in touch with Pierce these days, we teach a non-traditional student. By and large, the average age of our student is 35. Seventy-six percent of our students live in the city itself. Ninety-one percent live in the region. And through our online program, we actually have students from 17 of the 19 congressional districts in Pennsylvania. So the work you're doing, we're in the same space you are. We're doing this work with you. We're just at a different point, perhaps in the continuum. But certainly, education, literacy, and workforce development are very near and dear to our hearts. Our programs are all career-oriented. We are trying to get folks ready for life-sustaining careers. And not only getting into those careers, but being able to progress in those careers throughout their lives. So we're all in this together. And it's delightful for us to host an event like this today. And Representative Parker, and all the representatives, thank you for your service. Folks on the commission, thank you for your service. And anytime you need to call upon Pierce, we will be happy to respond and happy to serve you in any way that we can. We're delighted to be partners with folks like yourselves. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a great day and a great meeting.
We will get started with our first panel read Adult Literacy. It's Michael Westover, Executive Director of the Center for Literacy; Kim Rossman, President of PACE and Executive Director, Tutors of Literacy in the Commonwealth; and Dr. Carol Kleimer, Co- Director, the Institute for the Study of Adult Literacy from Penn State College of Education. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now feel free to just make sure you identify yourself for the record before you speak. And feel free to begin with your testimony.
Okay. Do you want me to begin?
Sure.
I'll move in closer to you.
Okay.
Esteemed members, thank you for coming to Philadelphia for this hearing. It's really, you know, an important issue for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I am Michael Westover, the President and CEO of Center for Literacy here in Philadelphia, and the former State Director of Post-Secondary and Adult Education. I left that position in January to come to Center for Literacy. I've spent my entire career working in the field of literacy. And it's been challenging on many levels. But in my state service, I had the opportunity to dig deep into the issue around the entire Commonwealth. And we have at least 1.4 million Pennsylvanians who don't have a high school diploma. And the number of Pennsylvanians who lack basic literacy skills is somewhat higher than that. There was a recent study done, the National Assessment of Adult Literacy, in 2003. And the Institute for Education Services at the U.S. Department of Education did an extrapolation of the data from that study to the county level. And when you look at literacy rates at the county level across Pennsylvania, an interesting thing happens. The poverty rate in each county and the literacy rate, rate of low literacy are the same. So it's between 12 and 14 percent. That's our biggest indicator of what that, a lack of literacy means for the economies in each of your districts and for the Commonwealth. I think we all know the workforce development story, where we struggle to have workers in the Commonwealth who have the basic academic skills to succeed in the workforce. In Philadelphia in particular, where you're talking about levels of people who lack basic literacy skills of about 25 percent in one of the major metropolitan areas of the United States, it's hard to attract business and to keep business when you don't have a workforce that can excel. So that's not only true in Philadelphia, it's true the whole way across the Commonwealth. So when you look at the Western districts, where you have somewhat of a post-industrial economy, and you're looking to bring in new service industries and technology industries and 21st century industry, if you have a population that doesn't have basic academic skills, it's very difficult to do that, attract the business and keep the business. The other thing that I noticed, being at the Department of Education for 10 years, and I got to participate in many, many department-wide staff meetings where discussions were held about the quality of our 500 school districts, the quality of the instruction, our big struggling school districts, Philadelphia, Chesteroplin, Harrisburg, Duquesne School District, which, you know, is almost done being a school district. And I couldn't help, when I was sitting in those meetings, but think that, you know, the first teachers of our children are their parents. And so if the parents lack basic academic skills and have low literacy and are living in poverty, that your children are starting off behind. So the work you have to put into catching those children up later on, you know, is expensive. And one of the ways to alleviate some of that expense is to invest in literacy for the parents. So I always thought, during my time at the Department, that investing in literacy was one of the best things that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania could do for the economy and for our kids in school. And I'll leave it at that. I feel, I don't know if we're open for questions or...
Members? Any members with questions? Well, just tell me if you will, and I'll have this question for the mayor's commission. But since you worked for the Commonwealth outside of Philadelphia, are, did you get any cries, any calls for literacy programs in other regions? You know, because obviously, part of what we have to do when we have hearings like this is, you give us the information so that we can go back and make the plea for funding. So what were you getting from regions outside of Philadelphia?
I mean, I was getting the same cry the whole way across the state. There are certain areas where the problem is compounded by the geography of Pennsylvania. So in the Northeast, for example, the population is, of course, much smaller in those counties than it is in the Southeast. But you have challenges of distance. You have technological challenges. So if you want to invest in distance education, you don't often have the broadband capability to work online. That happens in central Pennsylvania, north of State College as well, and in the Southwest. Those three regions are just in dire need of literacy education. And they need an approach that addresses their uniqueness. So they can't get on the Broad Street line and go to class. It's 50 or 60 miles away in the snow. And I heard that over and over again. So there are other investments that need to be made in those areas to accommodate studying.
Mr. Westover?
Yeah.
I guess the question I have for you is, when we think of literacy and someone being illiterate, so to speak, and it's funny, I just had to look it up.
Uh huh.
And it says, "The quality or state of being literate, especially the ability to read and write." And I guess my question relates to, I think you were saying that there's, I think, 1.4 million Pennsylvanians without a high school diploma.
Right.
Basically, does the high school diploma therefore, if you achieve the high school diploma, are we now saying that those individuals that achieve a high school diploma are no longer illiterate?
No. I wouldn't say that. There are plenty of Pennsylvanians who do have a high school diploma and are still struggling with literacy skills. In fact, when I took my position at Center for Literacy, I visited our class site at 12th and Fairmont. And two students carried their high school diplomas around with them. And they showed me those diplomas and they said, "I have a high school diploma. I was promoted socially. And it means nothing because I can't read and do math." And the one gentleman in particular said that when he was a sixth grader, they told, at the end of sixth grade, they told him he was being promoted to seventh. He went home and told his mother that he didn't want to go to seventh grade because he didn't master sixth grade. So his mother packed him up. They went to the school. They talked to the principal. And the principal said, "You can't stay in sixth grade. You're too old. You have to go to seventh." At the end of seventh grade, told his mother, "I'm really far behind." They went back to the school, socially promoted. He gave up. He graduated. He's in our classes at Center for Literacy. So it doesn't, the high school diploma doesn't equal literacy.
Just a follow-up. Yeah, I would imagine that while, at least while students are still in the education centers at that time, the easiest time for us to quantify their literacy rates.
Right.
I want someone to add, in public education, illiterate adults are not regularly submitting themselves to testing by testing to determine their literacy rates. How are we able to determine the literacy rates for adults who are no longer in public schools?
That's a pretty hard thing to do. Like you said, people don't walk around and say, "I can't read." So we do rely on the latest study, the National Adult, I always say it wrong, National Assessment of Adult Literacy and the county extrapolations. That test is, that survey has been done, I think, twice now, '93 and 2003, right? And...
Is there one due for a third?
I would hope. Is there one coming up? So, see, once you leave the Commonwealth, you kind of get out of the loop pretty quickly.
I guess that's the endgame.
Yeah. So that's probably our biggest indicator. And like I said, the other indicator is poverty rates. People who can't read don't succeed. And it's not just reading. It's math as well. And then there are other complications of financial literacy and health literacy. And you can see there's a snowball effect. You know, if you can't, I bet a lot of us, when we don't feel well, we go to WebMD and we put in our symptoms and try to figure out what's wrong and decide if we need to call the doctor. Well, if you have low literacy skills, you're not doing that. You're just going to stay sick. And staying sick and not having insurance ends up costing. One other issue I forgot to bring up is the quality of the instruction in adult literacy. So in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, of course, we have certification for K-12 teachers. We don't have any standards for adult educators. And it tends to be a field, much like myself, I was trained to be a high school Spanish teacher, didn't like teaching high school Spanish, and ended up in the field of adult literacy. That happens with people with all different kinds of education, or they may not even have a bachelor's degree. When I was the State Director, three years ago, for the first time, I instituted a policy where a teacher of adult literacy had to have at least a bachelor's degree. So we need to do something to train teachers to do this. And it's a really specialized field and it's really important work. And I think we should take a better look at it. The Commonwealth spends about a quarter of a million dollars a year on training adult literacy teachers. And we should look at how those dollars, you know, are invested and what kind of training we have for the teachers.
Well, we just had some of our other colleagues who arrived. And I want to ask them to introduce themselves. Brian, fellas, I'm grateful that all the Philadelphians are here. But I noted for the record before you came in that I'm even more grateful to you all because you traveled so far to get here. And we're very grateful. So we start over here. Because...
Nick Coadick, 45th Legislative District, Ellican County.
Tom Costa, 21st Legislative District, Ellican County, City of Pittsburgh.
W. Curtis Thomas, Philadelphia County.
Representative Vanessa Larrick Brown.
And we have, now, we're going to make sure when we get to the next panel that we definitely hear from all of you first before we start asking our questions. But we have two more. Okay? So you have people with cerebral powers that are working. Rep. Robuck and then Rep. Brown.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, and you spoke about the disparity or the difference between northeastern Pennsylvania and Southwestern Pennsylvania. You talked about distance. I want to understand, when you talk about literacy training and teaching skills of literacy, is that more than, is that most often one-on-one instruction opposed to what you can do in terms of distance education, given distances? Does it demand that you have a teacher in front of you and a sort of interaction of more for it to be successful?
That's a complicated issue that I struggled with a lot. We have a mix in Pennsylvania of classroom instruction, small group instruction of four, five, six students to one volunteer tutor or teacher, and pairs, student tutor, I mean, yeah, student tutor pairs in libraries all over the Commonwealth, in places like West Sunbury, that takes a while to get to in western Pennsylvania. And we also have a state-funded distance learning program. It's not the only distance learning program, but it's the one I know the most about. And there were about 300 students in that program out of the 30, between 20 and 30,000 per year. The number's gone down since 2008, when we took some drastic funding cuts. But, you know, everybody did. The number has gone down. But about 300 people in distance learning. And our criteria was, if someone could read at the sixth grade level or above, they would be a good candidate for distance learning. You're welcome.
Good afternoon. You had given us a nice description of one of the clients that came in and said that they knew that they graduated without proper literacy skills. How old was that individual?
He had just retired. He was 66 years old.
I was afraid of that. Because I experienced in my district office, many young people coming in. We all, some of us have the new workplace stations in our district office where people can come and apply for work. They can look for resumes and other things. And young people, between the ages of, I think, 16 to 25, because they're music. Many of them can't fill out the application online.
Right.
And when you sit down with them one-on-one and you try to explain to them that they're really not work-ready, that there still is some more education that they need to fill the gap if they need to be employed, they're very upset.
Yes.
And they're not accepting of that. And we are really doing our duty a disservice by graduating them without the proper skills and without them having the mental capacity to understand that more is needed. And we're leaving them out there without a parachute, basically.
Right.
And, you know, these children become disillusioned. And then you see so many of them sitting on corners, not having anything to do. So, you know, I appreciate the story. And I'm glad that you supported us. That gentleman was at his retirement when he realized.
Yeah.
Can you imagine the long time of his life or what it was like?
Right. And he told me that story that day. And I live on Cabot Street in Fishtown. And across the street, there's a group of young men who sit all day. And so I told them what I do. And I saw this interest in, you know, passing the GED test or going back to school. But it quickly fades, I think.
Education is not there. And it's not properly funded. So that we have someone in counsel, for a counselor, because if you have to do literacy counseling.
Right.
I'm learning that because I have a personal experience where I am a caregiver for someone who is an adult, 20 years old, and who needs further counseling and education. And you said something that I thought you really hit on the head. And that was about certification for adult literacy providers. And I've, because I've had to pick a provider, I've had a very challenging time finding someone who is qualified. Because there are plenty of providers out there. But once we started to see the work, they were not qualified providers. And there are some agencies that are giving a lot of money through some court order, you know, remediation. And they're not still providing that service. So for a lot of mothers and fathers out there who are low income, who are having literacy trouble themselves, they think that they have entrusted the right person to help bridge that gap for their child, and later found out that they wasted a lot of time and a lot of money and can't go back.
Right.
To save that time. So I think that is something we really need to look for. At the same level, I was glad to see Cheryl and Robuck writing. I think he was writing some legislation while we were there.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Good afternoon again. I just have one question because I'm the type that I don't want to assume everybody knows everything because I don't. My question is, is can you explain to us exactly what distance, the Distance Learning Core Raima project is, please?
Right. The, distance learning comes in many, many forms in Pennsylvania. We received some dollar, I'm going to talk from my experience. We received some dollars in, I guess, the late 1990s from U.S. Department of Education to do a pilot with distance learning. And we used some video-based curricula. And so students could go to the local library, go to their local learning center, take the videos, take the books, go home, come back, meet with the student. We also had kind of a mail correspondence program because there are folks who are so far away. Let's take, in 2008, we had an adult literacy success story from Warren County. And the individual lived so far away from anything that the best way to teach her was through mail. And she was successful. She became an LPM over time. So that was successful. So in Pennsylvania, I never ruled anything out. Of course, you want it to be on the Internet and you want all these great things. But sometimes, that's not possible. So you accommodate your teaching methods to the resources you have available. So it could be several different things. You're welcome.
Thank you, Representative Parker, and your fellow representatives. I am Kim Rossman, and I am here as the President of PACE, which is the Pennsylvania Association for Adult and Continuing Education, and as the Executive Director of a statewide organization called Tutors of Literacy in the Commonwealth. Thank you for inviting me to testify here on behalf of Adult and Family Literacy Programs in Pennsylvania. As the current President of PACE and the Executive Director of Tutors of Literacy in the Commonwealth, I appreciate your time and your willingness to listen to the importance of investing in adult and family literacy programs. These programs train participants to successfully join the workforce. And the participants that benefit from the adult and family literacy programs, typically, as Michael said, have not been successful in traditional educational settings. Again, as was mentioned, they may or may not have graduated from high school. They're most likely dealing with a change in their lives that has prompted them to see the need for further literacy skills. Epic programs, adult literacy, adult and family literacy programs that are educating Pennsylvanians and investing in our communities are the only programs available to help meet the needs of this population of learners. PACE is the voice for Pennsylvania's working professionals in the field of adult education. And our mission is to provide leadership for adult and literacy education, promote the professionalization of the field, as we mentioned, the importance of instructors in adult literacy having some sort of a certification, informing policymakers on behalf of our membership, and apprising our membership of policy development. With Tutors of Literacy in the Commonwealth, we provide support to volunteer instructors and tutor coordinators in adult literacy programs throughout the state. Just as it's important for adult education instructors to be certified, it's also important for volunteer instructors to have some training. And these volunteer instructors are often paired with the learners with the greatest barriers to learning. These volunteers fill a great need in the field. And they certainly are known for making a difference in the lives of many. Tutors of Literacy helps programs determine the best way to provide support and training to this invaluable population of volunteer instructors. My roles have provided me with a unique statewide perspective on the services and needs of adult literacy programs in Pennsylvania. And I hope to be able to concisely share a bit of what I've learned regarding the value of the services provided by the adult literacy programs. Unfortunately, it comes as no shock to us that Pennsylvania's workforce is struggling to meet the needs of the 21st century economy. The workforce skills of adults need to increase if we hope to continue to support our current economy. This struggle is seen clearly in two ways. First, and Michael mentioned some statistics as well, over a million Pennsylvania adults over the age of 25 lack a high school diploma. Secondly, 13 percent of Pennsylvanians 16 and older lack basic prose skills. And this information also comes from the 2003 study from the National Assessment of Adult Literacy. This means, in everyday language, that these adults would have difficulty doing things, like you mentioned, filling out a job application, reading a newspaper article at the eighth grade level. grade level. And yes, we are due for another survey, and Michael said, there is one coming up, there should be information available on October 8th from the Program for International Assessment of Adult Competencies, PIAC. And that information will focus on the cognitive and workplace skills needed for successful participation in the 21st century society and for global economy. Adult and family literacy programs work hard to fill the gaps between skill levels of Pennsylvania's adult learners and the needs of the economy. Adult literacy does go beyond reading and writing, and the needs of the adult learners go beyond education. With the help of case managers, focused professional development for instructors, and increased requirements for volunteer tutors, adult and family literacy programs are better able to help learners with both academic needs and workforce skills such as time management, critical thinking skills, problem solving, things that will help them in every aspect of their lives. These adult and family literacy programs are found in a variety of areas such as intermediate units, school districts, career and technical centers, community colleges, literacy councils, community-based organizations, correctional facilities, and institutions of post-secondary education. They provide instruction in adult basic education, in GED preparation, in family literacy, English as a second language, and workplace skills through classrooms, through small groups, through distance learning, one-on-one tutoring, and including the important piece of the educational case management. These programs serve learners such as Kim, who was in Erie, who dropped out of high school in the eighth grade because she got pregnant. She focused on being a single parent for 15 years, working when she could at jobs that didn't provide enough to support her family. Her decision to get her GED certificate led her to Stairway's Behavioral Health, Health's Adult Education Program, wherein her instructor now shares Kim's story to help motivate new learners. He talks of Kim's abilities, her attitude, her sense and need of achievement to help others see that while difficult times are inevitable, they can be overcome. Kim got her GED certificate. She spoke in front of the other GED graduates at the program's graduation ceremony, and she's now attending classes at Mercyhurst College to get her bachelor's degree in nursing. Students like Steve, who's from Lincoln Intermediate Unit Number 12 Adams County Literacy Council, who started in their Transitions 55+ Program, a computer skills training that was created in partnership with the PA Career Link Office. Steve was a dislocated worker who wanted to develop his computer skills in order to qualify as an administrative assistant. After working with the literacy council to improve his skills, Steve now went through the application process against other qualified applicants, and he has become their indispensable program assistant who can readily relate to the learners and the volunteers and instructors in the program. These stories reflect the needs of adults in every region of our state. Adult and family literacy programs work hard to meet the needs of these learners despite the almost 50% of funding cuts that we've experienced in the last seven years. We're thankful for loving, level funding this year with the additional funding that did go to one specific program. While the funding has decreased, the demand for services has, as you can imagine, increased. Jobs are requiring more complex skills, technology skills are becoming a necessity, and the impending changes to the GED are prompting many to try to complete the exam before July 2014. Approximately, or up to 40,000 adults in Pennsylvania could have their scores erased if they don't complete all portions of the exam by the end of this calendar year. The number of adult and family literacy providers has decreased, along with the cut in funding from approximately 120 to 60 providers, a clear reflection of the decrease in funds, yet, as stated, a growing number of learners continue to need the services. In 2011-12, 28,000 adults participated in adult education and family literacy programs, which was a decrease of about 44% since 2007-8, again, a reflection of the result of the funding cuts. I think my testimony and the others you hear, will hear today will make it clear that we could certainly do more for more adult learners in the state with more funding. Legislators certainly have an unenviable task in determining how to prioritize the number of good causes that you deal with needing funding support. So please know that the field of adult and family literacy stands ready to provide the reasons our services are needed, as well as the reasons why we deserve strong consideration when budgeting decisions are made. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to appear before you today.
I can see our time is up here, so I'm going to add to, I'm Carol Kleimer. I'm newly to Penn State University as the co-director for the Institutes for the Study of Adult Literacy and the Goodling Institute for Research in Family Literacy. I left Philadelphia just in June, so I'm really new to my position. And when I was in Philadelphia, I worked at Public Private Ventures for many years. Some of you may know of that, social policy research organization that went out of business, unfortunately. And I, partially because we are at almost the end of our time, and because my two colleagues here said so many important things, and my testimony is really focused on the investment and why investing in adult education is a good idea. And there's many compelling reasons why it's a good idea. I think they've mentioned a lot of them. But I just want to leave you with some thinking about currently, the income disparity, I think, is one of the most compelling reasons to invest in adult education. It's growing. There's a recent article, a series of articles, in fact, in the New York Times, February 2013, which talk about equal opportunity in our country. And the same is true for, to the state of Pennsylvania. I looked for statistics in Pennsylvania, and unfortunately, I couldn't find them, so I'll just talk very broadly. This article in the New York Times really builds a compelling case that the reason, the most important reason for the income disparity is because of education, and the quality and the quantity of education. And for many of adults who have not succeeded in education and haven't had the opportunity to continue, have dropped out for whatever reason, they lack a high school diploma, and it really makes a difference in their income and their economic prospects. There's a lot of statistics about how important education is, the importance is growing, the, and there's different statistics, but, you know, a very common one is that 63% of the jobs will require some kind of post-secondary education. Another really important statistic is that there's, there are jobs, and there are high-paying jobs, and over the next several years, almost 23 million, there'll be a shortage of college-educated individuals to fill the jobs. And so, you know, the need for the growing numbers of adults who don't have a high school diploma, that don't have high school or the equivalent, that don't have their GED, is really important that we focus on this issue and invest in adult education, which Kim has nicely shown us how it has shrunk, the investment has shrunk over the last two or three decades. Some statistics say it's almost 25% across the country. In Pennsylvania, it sounds like it's more. And that's because adult education funding, some comes from the federal government, some comes from the state government, and some comes from local government. It's not any one source. It's really a patchwork of funding that is used to support adult education in all states. It's that way. But investing in education and investing in the education of adults and helping individuals who don't have their high school diploma or are limited in their English proficiency is really an important investment for taxpayers. Some, the Center for Labor Market Studies indicates that those who have their high school diploma can contribute over $250,000 in taxes in their lifetime. That's pretty significant. So if we do the math on how many people don't have their high school diploma and how much they may be able to contribute to taxes, that's state and federal and local, I think we need to really consider the economics of investing in adult education. And then there's more and more research that says that those who hold the GED are able to increase their economic prospects. So a recent study done by Andrew Summ and others indicates that GED holders have higher earnings in general, they have better labor market participation, they're employed full-time more consistently, they, there are statistics that it reduces poverty across the board, it reduces imprisonment and incarceration, and there's increased weekly earnings. I could go on, but we're out of time, and I just have to say that I think it's a no-brainer to invest in adult education.
I need to take you to Harrisburg and you go and send a message.
You've been joined by Chairman Mrs. Russell. Russell, say the question.
Thank you. My question, I guess, is for Dr. Kleimer and Ms. Rossman. Mr. Westover, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard you say that there are not generally standards for adult literacy education, how to train the trainers?
There have been attempts, and we've invested a lot of money in training people up to be adult educators, but there are nowhere, there's nothing like what we have for K-12, where you have to pass a test and you have to take certain courses.
When you talk about people being certified by PACE, is it that they're then certified by?
PACE doesn't, PACE doesn't formally offer any certification. It's something that, as an organization, we're trying to help promote the professionalization and maybe come up with some sort of a certificate. So I may have misstated. There's not, we have, Tutors of Literacy in the Commonwealth does do some trainings for tutors to help get them certified as a state certificate, I should say, as opposed to certified. We have trainings for the tutors to try to do that, in addition to the fact that tutors in adult literacy programs are now also required to have a four-year degree.
And Dr. Kleimer, do other states, have other states established better criteria for this type of adult literacy training?
Yes, some states have. I think Ohio is one of them. I think California is one of them. I think Vermont could be one of them. I'm digging here. Am I right, Michael? You have the state, I think we found, Penn State is developing an adult literacy certificate, and that we're going to do it online. And we've been looking at other states that have the requirement. It's hard to do it, though, if the state doesn't have the requirement, there's no compelling reason to take the courses.
In your, in your collective experience, the three of you, has there been, has there been a sort of standard opposition to this happening in Pennsylvania, or is there just not been a control effort yet?
Wages, people are not paid very well.
That's an honest answer.
Yes.
I apologize for getting here late, and perhaps you've covered this. Can you talk a little bit, if you haven't already, and if you have, just tell me I missed it, it's too bad, about the pliability of the brain of an adult versus the pliability of a brain of a five-year-old? Or, I mean, you know, how much more difficult is it for an adult to learn than it is a child? And do you need, is that why some of this training is different? Because children learn differently than adults do? And at what point in time do you give up on me and say, I'm sorry, you're such an adult brain, that, you know, it's, you're casting concrete, and, you know? And particularly, how do you help me deal with my colleagues on the other side of the aisle? But, you know? Really, though, I'm seriously, with adult brains, what's the, what's, can you get into a little bit of the science of that?
No. I can say I'm limited on what I can tell you about the science piece of it, but what I can say is that it is different teaching adults than it is teaching children because of so many factors. And that's one of the things that adult education instructors, volunteer instructors, need to know, is that it is different. A large portion of the population in adult literacy programs anywhere throughout the nation, a large portion have some sort of a learning difference. It may or may not be diagnosed. It's very difficult to get a percentage on what that is, but as we said, they did not do well. More often than not, they did not do well in a traditional school setting, so they need provided information differently. And we don't give up. We don't give up. It's very, very, you know, maybe if there's mental health issues or developmental disabilities, that's not the population we're focused on, though. We're focused on very competent adult learners that could very easily thrive in society, given the support that they need.
And I, I mean, I, I too don't know very much about the science of the adult brain compared to, you know, younger people's brains, but I, but I do know about the context. And adults have, as Kim said, a lot of them have not done well in school, but a lot of them have done well in life. And, you know, very productive in terms of their lives. And there's, there's a lot of movement towards, especially with the new GED, some work that I've done, there's a lot of movement towards setting up educational situations where they can use their life experiences to help them learn and achieve the diploma or the credentials that they need to. There's many adults who work already, and, you know, the, the number of people who work without a high school diploma is a lot. And it's just, I think, an important, to remember that they are, many of them, very smart, they just don't have the same life experiences that other people did in education, and very capable of learning. That's, that's my personal feeling.
One of the things that the field of adult basic education, adult literacy is good at is, when you compare an adult to a child, so, one thing that we've struggled with for a long time is you give somebody a reading test and you assign, you have to measure their reading ability somehow. So with the Workforce Investment Act of 1998, we came up with this educational functioning level to describe the ability of adults to read and do math. And that was to move away from a system of saying, a 50-year-old person reads at a third grade level, for a couple of reasons. One, it can be demoralizing to be told that you're 50 and you read at a third grade level. The other thing is, that adult really doesn't read at a third grade level. They have all 50 years of knowledge that, you know, or 42 years of knowledge that an eight-year-old doesn't have. And so it's really, it's something that's really hard to measure. So we know that there is a difference, and we try to approach people from, or students from the idea that they have learned quite a bit in their lives, and let's build on what they already know.
Staff has given me the hook sign, so we're going to have a question from Rep. Kenzie, and that'll be the final question for this panel, but we do want to ask you if you could just stay around, because I think we're going to need to call you for some questions we had later.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm actually going to squeeze in two questions in this timeframe, if I may. Ms. Rossman, you mentioned in your testimony that in 2011, 2012, 28,000 adults participated in adult education and family literacy